Good evening, everybody. Sorry we were a little -- whoop. Good evening, everybody. Sorry we were a little bit late and we appreciate your patience. Madam Clerk?
Do you need a motion to adjourn the executive session?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. I need a motion to close the -- close session, too.
Close the -- So close the Cal.
Close the Cal session.
And just to add with respect to the closed session, since we did talk about the ZISA litigation, I do need to publicly announce that was discussed in closed session as well.
Okay. Need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the -- oh, wait, I do roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Yeah.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here. Now would everybody please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
All right. I do have a proclamation tonight which I'm going to read. I don't think anybody is here for Doc Russell. Doc Russell was a longtime Hackensack resident, just known as Too Sweet. I don't know if anybody knew him that's here now, but I am going to read this proclamation into the record, and it reads, "Whereas Doc Too Sweet Russell is a Hackensack icon, multi-talented performer, songwriter, poet, producer, community advocate, educator, and humanitarian; and whereas Doc Russell moved to Hackensack, New Jersey from Talladega, Alabama, where over forty-nine years he added a new dimension to New Jersey with his entertainment and humanitarian skills, using his abilities to motivate, educate, and build character and self-esteem in everyone he met; and whereas Doc Russell served youths of North Jersey in particular, but also young adults and senior citizens, enhancing their quality of life with community motivation and cultural education programs; and whereas Doc Russell served on many boards and committees in both the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, including but not limited to City Block Watch programs, the Creative Arts Team, Bicentennial Committee, Majestic Lodge 153's Youth Development, MLK Senior Center, Bergen County Volunteer Probation Program, Juvenile Conference Committee, Juvenile Intensive Supervisory -- or Supervision Program, and the Kuma Community Activity Program. And whereas Doc Too Sweet Russell will be returning to Talladega, Alabama, to help his family manage the Annie W. and Doc Russell Foundation for Art, Culture, and Community Education, an organization in their honor for their vision, motivation, inspiration, support, and opportunities they offered their siblings and the people of Talladega. So there, now therefore I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the City Council, do hereby honor Doc Too Sweet Russell for his contributions to the city of Hackensack and wish him the best of luck in all his future endeavors." So he's not here, but he might watch us on YouTube, so let's give him a round of applause. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for the Cal and the regular June 27th meeting of 2017.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Now I need a motion for the July 1 reorganizational meeting.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Mayor, is Councilwoman Rudenberg --
I just -- but I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. Was Kathy out of one of those?
No, everybody was supposed to know.
Okay.
The roll. Here.
All right, good. All right, good. City managers report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. City managers report for July 24, 2017. Congratulations to the city on receiving $1 million grant award. This grant will be used for the Main Street, Streetscape improvements. I have to say, that's a sizable fund of money that's coming to the city, and to my knowledge, probably one of the biggest grants that the city's received in probably a decade. Two, the two-way conversion of Main Street and State Street has begun. I am sure that you see multiple signboards that have been placed at Main Street and State Street, so people are aware of the conditions and the changing traffic patterns. There are expected delays and detours. We're doing the best we can, but unfortunately, it is a big project, it's going to take some time, but certainly with a little patience and some cooperation, I'm sure we're going to get that done. During the construction, use caution, obey all the posted signs, expect delays, and use alternate routes that may be necessary to avoid that whole condition anyway. So we have obviously cross streets that might provide a quicker, without delayed response to the city. Three, I would like to remind all residents that Appraisal Systems is still doing the reassessment throughout the city. This is the third year of a rolling assessment program over a five-year period. All field inspections will have photo identification authorized by the city. They wear these lanterns around their necks, so they'll have a picture ID on them. A notice is on our website as well as you need more information, and if there is obviously any concern, just pick up the phone, call the police department or City Hall, we'll verify it for it. Our next concert on the Green is Eagle Mania, which is tomorrow night on the Green. And last is Clay Street, the flooding issue is being resolved. I've been in contact with Arcatus, who is going to give us a report and identify the streets, Clay, Stanley, those that flood. Our plan is, there's no point in re-cammering them, because we realize that we have a blockage or certainly sediment in those lines, so we're going to clean them first, and then we're going to look and see what our next storm brings for us as far as flooding and conditions. And from there, we're going to burn, build a process and an action plan for the city to address the issue of flooding and also the separation. So unfortunately, this will take some time. I know that this condition has been for decades for the city, but the city is committed to making an improvement to this and certainly relieve these residents of these conditions. And that would conclude my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving forward, Resolution 242-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 20-2017, an ordinance adopting Main and Anderson Street redevelopment plan, commonly known as the Holman Site, consisting of Block 410, Lots 1, 2.01, and 22. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, Hudson Street, Hackensack. Welcome to our new councilperson. I hope you do a good job as the seat that you're filling, because Debbie was phenomenal. And do your homework, don't be rubber-stamping what everybody else says, and give us good decisions. Welcome. What's going to happen here? More apartments? I mean redevelopment, to what respect? What is going to happen on this location?
This is a 160-unit apartment building on Anderson Street.
Okay. Why is redevelopment synonymous with more apartments? Why do we see people going to come and fill what we're doing first before we start knocking down and think people are running to Hackensack? How about a post office? On-site parking and things that we, that people can use? I mean, everything is apartments, apartments, apartments. And I don't want to be another Hoboken, because we are going to be another Hoboken, because Hoboken is notorious for not having parkings, and we don't have enough parking for anything we do. So why doesn't somebody come up with another plan other than apartments? And why don't we wait and to see if we fill these and then go ahead and move on and do more? Right now, everything, it's like a war zone, everything is knocked down and nothing's built up yet, and we don't even know if people are going to come running to Hackensack. Is there any -- why is it always apartments? There's no demand for apartments. I don't see any demand. There's lots of empty apartments right around.
I disagree with that, but...
No, you can ride around and see, a lot of empty, a lot of empty. Why don't we just fix some of the places that we have instead of knocking down and building up? Nobody has an answer? I just don't know that redevelopment is synonymous with apartments. That's all I say. I would like a post office with onsite parking. That would be nice.
One, a federal, federal building would be for the federal government.
No, what, and we could do like Little Ferry, we can get a building, let somebody build it, and then rent it out, and people can park. We can't, we're a big city, we can't even park to go to the post office. That's part of redevelopment. And why didn't, why didn't Main Street, before you make it two ways? These are things that you do to better things, not to just put problems on top of problems. Thank you.
Anybody else on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Need a motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 20-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 243-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 21-2017, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicap.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 21-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August, it should be 22nd, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 244-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 22-2017, a bond ordinance providing for the various capital improvements by and for the city, I'm sorry, improvements by and in the city of Hackensack in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey appropriating $1,860,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,769,500 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
Okay. Need a motion for this?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 22-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 22 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 245-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 23-2017, an ordinance authorizing entry of real estate purchase and sale agreement with designated redeveloper PCP Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC for sale of Block 419, Lot 18 pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A:12-1 at SEC.
You have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 23-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 22, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 246-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 24-2017, capital ordinance of the city of Hackensack in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing for various improvements to city-owned buildings and appropriating $455,000 and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance and capital improvement fund of the general capital fund of the city of Hackensack.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 24-2017, as introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 22, 2017, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a note of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 247-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 25-2017, an ordinance fixing and determining municipal class position titles and salary ranges for certain contractual and non-contractual officers and employees of the city of Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 25-2017, as introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 22 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. 248-17.
This is a resolution formally designating redeveloper and authorizing redevelopment agreement with PCP Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC for the redevelopment of Block 419, Lots 18, 22, 26, and 27, Anderson Street redevelopment plan area pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A:12-1 at SEC.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 249-17.
This is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $6,463.86 to McKinley Gorgon of the DPW.
Have a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 250-17.
This is a resolution authorizing for accrued time payout of $5,003.18 to the estate of Keith Blakely, also of the DPW.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 251-17.
A resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated July 24, 2017, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 252-17.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 253-17.
This is a resolution authorizing refunds for the Hackensack Recreation Department.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 254-17.
This is a resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated July 18, 2017, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution 255-17.
This is a resolution authorizing an increase in contract for architectural services for DMR, Emergency Operations Center Elevator Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, we're going to go into the consent agenda, but I'd like to --
It's up to you, payment.
Oh, I'm sorry. 256-17. We do have to pay those, right?
This is a resolution for the authorizing for the payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills, please?
I want to amend and pull Mr. Catanha's bill for review.
Okay.
So we're doing a motion?
Need a motion to pull Mr. Catanha's bill for review?
Okay, so it's a motion to pull Mr. Catanha's bill from the bills list, which is going to change the current fund amount, okay, to, instead of, right now, the current fund is listed as $3,365,771.66. When you pull that bill, the bill is for $9,100, which will then change the current funds amount to $3,356,671.66. Okay, amendment. Now we need a motion.
I need a motion to --
For the amendment.
Authorize the payment of bills minus Mr. Catanha's bill.
Well, yeah, for the motion.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And then you need a motion for the rest of the bills.
Need a motion to pay the rest of the bills.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, we're moving into the consent agenda, I have several that need to be removed. I'd like to remove 258, 259, and 284.
Okay, does anybody have any --
They're those separate.
Anything else to be pulled?
Anybody else have anything else to remove? Don't think so, no.
Okay, just give me one second to pull two fifty-eight, nine, and then two eighty-four, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay, the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. And consent agenda items will reflect in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or addition. The consent agenda consists of resolutions two fifty-seven dash seventeen through two eighty-four dash seventeen, with these three following being pulled for individual vote. Two fifty-eight dash seventeen, two fifty-nine dash seventeen, and two eighty-four dash seventeen. Resolution two fifty-seven dash seventeen is a resolution correcting employment titled on resolution two twenty-six seventeen for leave of absence for Jeanette DiAmati. Resolution two sixty dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing a leave of absence for Jacqueline M. Stout, executive assistant in the manager's office. Resolution two sixty-one dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing the release of a performance bond for ninety-four slash one hundred State Street, Meridia Metro. Resolution two sixty-two dash seventeen is a resolution authorizing the award of contract for architectural services, DMR, for firehouse window replacement project. Resolution two sixty-three dash seventeen is a resolution to cancel existing liquor license, which is a club license for the Oritani Field Club. Resolution two sixty-four dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Willis Goldman and Spitzer, Lisa Gorab Esquire, to serve as bond counsel. Resolution two sixty-five dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Jeffrey Orshurian and Associates LLC to serve as special counsel for affordable housing. Resolution two sixty-six dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Linda H. Swagger to serve as an alternate prosecutor. Resolution two sixty-seven dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to DeMarco and DeMarco Michael P. DeMarco Esquire to serve as public defender. Resolution two sixty-eight dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to the Gray Law Firm LLC for Navarro Gray Esquire to serve as public defender. Resolution two sixty-nine dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to law offices of Raymond A. Rea Esquire to serve as public defender. Resolution two seventy dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Joseph Wenzel Esquire to serve as public defender. Resolution two seventy-one dash seventeen, a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Archer and Greiner for Brian Nelson Esquire to serve as special counsel for redevelopment. Resolution two seventy-two dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Inglisino Webster Wyseckella and Taylor LLC to serve as special counsel for redevelopment, and I apologize if I screwed up any of those names. Resolution two seventy-three dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement for Wiss and Borgi, Raymond Wiss Esquire, to serve as special counsel for labor unemployment. Resolution two seventy-four seventeen is a resolution awarding professional agreement to Murphy Orlando LLC, Jason Orlando Esquire, to serve as special counsel for labor and employment. Resolution two seventy-five dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Kaufman Semerero and Liebman LLP to serve as a special counsel for labor and employment. Resolution two seventy-six dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to the Razzo Legal Group LLC, Mark A. Razzo Esquire, to serve as special counsel for tax appeals. Resolution two seventy-seven dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to O'Donnell McCord PC with Matthew O'Donnell Esquire to serve as special counsel for tax appeals. Resolution two seventy-eight dash seventeen is a resolution award professional service agreement to Inglisino Webster, again, West Cala, and Taylor LLC to serve as special counsel for tax appeals, again, I apologize. Resolution two seventy-nine dash seventeen, a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Kaufman Semerero and Liebman LLP to serve as special counsel for litigation. Resolution two eighty dash seventeen is a resolution awarding professional service agreement to Murphy Orlando LLC, Jason Orlando Esquire, to serve as special counsel for litigation. Resolution two eighty-one dash seventeen is a resolution awarding extraordinary unspecified service contract to Vision Media Marketing Inc. to serve as public relations consultant to the city of Hackensack. Resolution two eighty-two dash seventeen, resolution awarding professional service agreement to Di Maria and Di Maria LLP to serve as auditor. And resolution two eighty-three dash seventeen is a resolution to formal support of the Hackensack Adaptive Traffic Signal Program Phase One and Two. We need a motion for those.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now I need, I'm gonna do, uh, resolution two fifty-eight dash seventeen.
This is a resolution authorizing raffle licenses?
Need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
I abstain. Resolution two fifty-nine dash seventeen.
This is a resolution authorizing renewal of membership in the South Bergen Municipal Joint Insurance Fund.
Okay, I make a motion that we table this?
Okay. Need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims. Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And resolution two eighty-four dash seventeen.
This is a resolution authorizing the settlement of litigation entitled Daniel Hanrahan versus City of Hackensack Claim Petition two thousand and fifteen, one zero four three six, pending in the New Jersey Division of Workers' Compensation.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
I abstain. Okay. Before we go into public, I'm gonna take a, uh, a break, give our clerk a second, bio break.
Need a motion to open to the public?
Need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to come forward and speak, now is your time. Please give your name and address to the clerk, and you have five minutes.
Mayor, can I just jump in for one second?
Surely.
During my city manager's report, it was brought to my attention that I omitted something. I just wanted to remind the public that the summer mini concerts are on every Friday night, seven PM, at Atlantic Street Park.
Mm-hmm.
My apologies.
Not a problem.
That's good. Kathleen Salvo, one eighty-four Hudson Street. Um, I got a notice for the appraisal people again, nothing's changed in the house, it's my mom's house, they left it on the door because nobody was home. Why do they have to come back? It's, the interior has not changed when they came back the first time, is this not a reliable company that they don't know what they did the first time, that they have to come back again? I mean, what's, what's the problem?
I haven't spoken to Atlantic Street, I mean, I'm sorry, to Appraisal Systems. Um, Appraisal Systems is a very reputable company, virtually three of them in the state. I have no idea why, if you want to supply me the address, we can certainly reach out to them, but I don't know.
Well, my neighbor did the same thing, she called me up and she chased them off the park, and she goes, you were just here like last year, why are you coming back? Nothing, nothing has changed unless somebody puts an addition to their house, can anybody answer me? Unless you put an addition to your house or you did something, inside stays the same.
They, they, go ahead.
All right, well, you want to answer me at the end?
Because they don't know if anybody's done an addition to their house, or remodeled bathrooms, or refinished their basements, they don't know that, that's why we're doing a rolling assessment every year.
But, doesn't matter if you fixed your bathroom, you don't get, you don't get charged more if you change the fixtures on your bathroom, there's no, there's no footprint, you didn't change the footprint, you didn't make the house bigger.
There's a lot of things you could do inside your house that change, especially, especially.
Well, if the building department were like a little more, you know, diligent, they would maybe catch it, but that's ridiculous, you can't bother people to come in a couple of times a year, this is not right. All right. But, and they had misinformation too, they didn't put things that were done right. Um, street sweeper, uh, the street sweeper itself, the machine, what happened to it? I have papers all over, I called up and they said it's broken, the machine that sweeps the streets?
We have three of them, so I don't know exactly what condition is on one of them, I don't believe all three of them are broken, so.
The one that does my street is broken.
Okay, well, I can find out tomorrow, but I have no idea. These, these vehicles get used daily, and obviously there's all this vibration, um, and exposure to it, so they, they do tend to, depending on the amount of mileage or use that they have on them, break down, but I can certainly call you and get you an answer.
What happened, Kathy, did they don't pass today?
No, they haven't passed in a while, I called and they said that the machine was broken, so I just asked why, because it's a heavily, uh, traffic, you know, uh, people do come into Hackensack that way. Um, what's going on with our recycling facility, are we gonna relocate, are we gonna, well, there's a lot of money on recycling, we don't recycle it to the max, and we are losing a lot.
I don't want to cut into your time, but I, I have to tell you that the city is looking at some, um, different locations and different sites and trying to put some of these plans into motion. Unfortunately, um, Hackensack does have this one condition, we seem to have to do this thing before we can do that thing because of, um, size, need, um, availability, so and in one sense, it's almost like a house of cards, you have to start here and work through the process, so every time I go to start off on one project, I have to stop and fix or alter that plan for some other conditions, but we are working on it.
This is what I'm talking about, this is part of redevelopment, these are things that we, the people, should be getting, not just apartment houses. I mean, these are important things that should have priority before we make like a thousand, you can have more people, we can't even take, we can't handle what we have. And I have a problem, we're gonna need more police, I had, I had a call, I called twice and they were busy, and we're bringing more people in, and we had a lot more people, less people years ago, we had, we had a bigger police department. And now we're bringing more people in, and that's gonna be, that's gonna cost us a lot more money. And what's going on with M and M, what do we, what's, what's the, um, the latest status on that?
We're gonna move it to Hudson Street.
Excuse me?
We're gonna move it by Hudson Street.
Okay. No, we should put it on Herman Street, I think that's a better area there. But, no, really, because, um, it's also a safety factor.
We're waiting.
Yes, I'm sorry, John.
We will know on the next meeting in August exactly what's happening.
Okay, because the other thing we have to keep in mind is the safety, that whole first row where we have parking, it should have a yellow line and it should be for fire trucks, because if you're gonna pack all those people in there, um, the fire, if something happens, God forbid, that's, that's the only access to, you know, the front of the building, we need to put fire trucks there. So those fourteen spaces that he fudged are gonna need, it's gonna be used for, used for fire trucks, thank you.
Thank you.
So, A and N, the assistant, the, um, that was answered, with the appraisal people?
If you supply me the address, I can get an answer.
Anybody's address, Ted, it doesn't just mean, I have two, my neighbor called.
She just doesn't understand why they're coming every year.
I just understand why they're coming back, it doesn't have to be the address.
I don't know whether they've changed staff, there was some confusion of what streets got covered and didn't get covered.
This is a very reputable company, we're paying.
They're gonna do random.
When the city of Hackensack contracts with these companies, we basically supply them with the information, we give them the addresses, and they provide this service. Um, there are, um, forty-eight thousand residents that live in this, I, I, I have a sneaking suspicion there's gonna be a few hiccups with forty-eight thousand people to process.
Two people got bought in. Did you tell them about the bicycles that were there?
I have not.
Thank you.
They'll find out my weekly report.
Next, please.
Mr. Glover.
Hi, Randy Glover, Main Street, Hackensack. Um, I just want to thank the whole city council for participating in the Main Street Live event, they've been very successful. Um, this year, uh, we have Toyota that's giving out scholarships, uh, to high school children that are going to college, and hopefully next year, um, them as well as Great Alliance will be given scholarships and internships for jobs, uh, to teenagers, because that's something that we need. Uh, so that's a totally different component, uh, when you talk about concerts. Um, these concerts try to cover, uh, multiple disciplines as far as culture is concerned, we have Latin, Caribbean, uh, dance music, you know, which is Motown seventies, eighties, nineties. Uh, this year LGBT, and, um, that's about it. I would like to especially thank Mayor LaBrus, Deputy Mayor Kathy Canestrino, Deputy Mayor Dave Sims for showing up. Uh, you guys always make a difference.
Kathy made it too.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I'm sorry, well, let's just say the whole council, okay? Um, but, Mayor, let me just say, you showed up to a number of events, you and Kathy, and there's one particular event that you guys showed up to, which was with the kids.
Mm-hmm.
And you guys made such an impact on those kids because you opened up, and it was amazing. So hopefully the same thing will happen, you know, in the coming year at that same event, but you guys, uh, really went a step above on that one. Okay? And again, thank you for participating in all of this.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
My pleasure, anyway.
It was really nice, the first scholarship that was awarded was one of the young women that participated in that youth.
Yes, exactly.
And, and we actually like had great conversation together, so, like, she was so excited to see me, and I was so excited to see her. I mean, really, you know, outstanding young woman, and really well deserving of that scholarship, so it was really nice to see that the selection, the criteria, whatever criteria you folks used to select these folks, I mean, you really picked the two individuals that I've seen so far, really, really responsible and great recipients for those, so. Thank you for helping in that as well.
All right, thank you.
Rich, Serbo, forty-six Spring Valley Avenue. You know, Longfellow mentioned that art is long and time is fleeting, and so I, I just want to sort of take off on that and just mention that time is running out uh, for you to change things, I mean, you know, you're, you're, you're doing things to benefit those that are already doing very well, okay? You're, you're just giving away tax breaks to developers, builders, everyone that wants to, you know, do some business in town, but you're not doing anything for those that are struggling, any, anybody that needs a hand up, how about some jobs? When are you gonna bring some jobs to the city, John? And, and by the way, I just want to stop there and interject that everyone's mentioning the concerts, but Romeo and Juliet is on Wednesday, so I just wanted to throw that in. Don't forget Romeo and Juliet is Wednesday, concerts are always, concerts are constant, okay? So, so back to what I'm saying about, um, time is fleeting, art is, art is long and time is fleeting, so time's running out for you to do something for, for those in need. Now, that's what, what government's all about, now, the, those that are well-to-do, those that are investing in the city can help themselves, now, okay, you can, you can, uh, do things to help them get along and create some, uh, some activity, sure, but you're just going overboard helping those that already are in, are doing so well, and you're ignoring everyone else, okay? So, and what about a few other things? When are you, uh, when are, when are we going to realize, because I say time is running out, that you're just wasting money, uh, renting a school from Saint Francis Church? When are you gonna build a school? And, uh, you're so chummy with the developers, why not get one of the developers, or maybe a few of them, to build a school? They can do it for half the price that we could do it. So, talk to the developers, you seem to talk to them enough when it comes to their tax breaks and what they're doing in town, but how about talking to them about building a school so we don't have to rent and pay an astronomical fee to the Padre Pio School for kids to go there, okay? That's one thing. Also, the, 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 the wavering, uh, the wavering sound you gave about the, um, the M and M, uh, building, is, is good news, I, I think you should cave in on that and move it to another area. There's, there's so much room in the Fraschini Park area, or you can put it on one of the back fields, or, so it, it would incorporate a sports as it is, so uh, sports is already there, you have fields there, why not have the rec center there? Instead of in a neighborhood that you probably wouldn't even be able to walk down the street or, or park a car down there, so, so that's, that's something else. So, again, time is running out, art is long, time is fleeting, John, do some things, instead of, you know, maintaining this status quo as if, uh, it, it's something to be preserved, I mean, you, you actually came out recently and said you were a Democrat, I mean, John, come on, be a Democrat if you want to be a Democrat, and help those, uh, that are maybe struggling, or those in the middle, not those at the top, okay? And please, bring some jobs to the city, so, uh, some, you know, some people can earn a living here and, and stay. And homeowners, how about, let me, let me throw this in before we leave, what about giving homeowners a break? What about those tax abatements we mentioned for homeowners, uh, and, and you agreed before the election, now, of course, that we're gonna forget all that. But why not let someone fix up their home and give them a tax abatement to sort of, uh, you know, preserve some of the, um, the homeowners? And, uh, keep homeowners from leaving, because, I mean, it's, there's gonna be a big exodus here when, uh, when, you know, you keep raising taxes. My taxes went up seven and a half percent on a house that has had no improvements, okay? It's, it's very modest, it's very small, and, and when the appraisal company came, uh, uh, Mr. Ehrenberg mentioned, what is it, Appraisals?
Appraisal Systems.
Appraisal System, now, when they came to appraise my house, uh, the fellow came in the front door, he stood right inside the front door, and he says, hey, how you doing, I'm from the appraisal company. I said, okay, you're welcome, hi, how you doing? And he says, uh, uh, the bedrooms and the bathroom are in the, in the back, right? I said, yeah, and he said, uh, does the side door go out to the yard? I said, yes, he didn't move, he went back out the front door and left.
Five minutes is up.
Now, that was his assessment, and, and he raised, and the price, he raised the assessment on my house, it's like medieval times, John. They did this in medieval times in the Great Brit.
Thank you. Next, please.
Regina Depascal, Parker Avenue. First, I, I have to, you know, quite often, things I have to say are not from me, people point things out to me, but this two deputy mayor thing is, I can't even defend it. I can't even understand it, I just, I, it's absurd. Mayor LaBrus, you abstained on the raffle because of HUMC, is there a reason you didn't abstain on, uh, the tax settlements, resolution two fifty-one?
I thought I looked at the tax settlements for conflicts.
Hillcrest Properties.
I didn't even see that one.
Jumped out at me. Somebody needs to help you out there, John, I know you got a lot going on. Somebody needs to review these things for you. Somebody has to know that too, you know, that Hillcrest Properties is Hackensack. Block one hundred, two eleven Essex Street.
It's not the, uh.
Hillcrest Properties, it's on.
Well, the Hillcrest at the hospital owns it, sixty-second Street.
The, um, no, Hillcrest Properties, the hospital, they're the same company, we all know this. And the deed, they sold the property, the deed is, I did look it up while I was sitting back there, is from the hospital to the other company, so.
I will look, I will look into it, but I don't believe they own two seventy-one Essex.
Well, they're connected, one is an arm of the other. Hillcrest and HUMC are, are practically one and the same thing.
My reason for saying that is I do all the safety inspections for all the buildings, and I'm never in two seventy-one Essex, ever.
It's two eleven Essex, and they sold it.
Two eleven Essex.
Two eleven Essex condo, one oh one, they sold it, but this tax appeal is a couple of years old.
Okay. Now, my apologies, because I didn't realize it was a hospital property.
No, somebody needs to look that up, okay, I'm back on my five minutes. Um, Carver Park, uh, Mr. Ehrenberg, I sent you an email on?
You did.
Okay. I didn't hear anything back, I, I understand there was cleanup done, but still drug paraphernalia at the park. And somebody says, if there, you know, the, don't have to have the police there, under two hundred people, I don't know who does the head count, but if there's an element there that is evidence of it the next day of drug paraphernalia, the police should be there. I, I understand the mess got taken care of this weekend, some, had somebody send me pictures, that it's all clean, but, you know, because somebody got annoyed that I was, if somebody else sent me the pictures that it was dirty, this is what I'm saying, I'm not out there inspecting the park, people send me things. But also, the kitchen, that's a, a private company, a for-profit company in the kitchen. Yeah, I, I asked, had asked you in the email if I could get a copy, they have to have a permit, have to have health inspection, the permit is seventy-five dollars per day for the kitchen.
What I wanted to tell you is that when you sent that email, I was on vacation.
I understand.
And I took some time off because I had a medical issue in my family, so I'm churning through these emails, but I will address those issues and I will respond back to you, but I have not been here to address those issues, but you'll hear from me.
Could you just confirm that my, my belief is that a private company cannot run a business out of the city park?
What I'm gonna confirm is that I'm gonna research all the facts, and I will get back to you with factual information.
Okay.
That's my answer.
Okay, it's my understanding that it cannot be done, that's how, you know.
Like I said, facts. Like I said, facts before acts. I'll get you the answer.
Okay, I mean, if we can't let ice cream vendors be near a park, why are we letting a company that's a private company, you know, use our kitchen and everything, and has to have a health department inspection and pay for the permit, okay?
I'm aware of that.
And I'm not aware that any of that has been done.
The health department's already been there, but I will get back to you with all of this.
Okay. With the M&amp;M Building, is there going to be a meeting with the residents?
The rez.
There is going to be a meeting with the residents, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
That wasn't, that, what was said was the next meeting would be an answer.
Hasn't been determined, but there will be a meeting.
Okay. And Teterboro, anything on the horizon with Teterboro?
Yes, there's a meeting Wednesday. I was going to talk about it at the end, it's my turn to speak. It's the regular TANAC meeting. Leading up to that, I have been in communication with them. Everything goes through Teterboro Airport to the FAA, but they agreed, they asked me for a list of questions from the city, which I supplied them with. They are asking for, at least until October, meeting to really answer, because I gave them a very long list of questions, but they are looking into a number of the things already that we asked for. And also, Teterboro Airport supplied a whole long list of their questions as well as a follow-up to the meeting. I will be attending the meeting on Wednesday. I was told not to expect too much conversation about us because they're still, that's still in progress. I don't know if you were here at the last meeting or not, where I went to a follow-noise meeting. I won't repeat myself if you remember that.
Yeah, I was here at the last meeting.
Yes, okay. So I already attended that one as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Paul Nichols.
Paul?
You know, a couple of years ago, I don't know if it was one or two, I had spoke about, you know, gambling, drinking, and drugs in the parks, and, but what I want to talk about tonight is, is a county program called the Hart Program, and it's heroin addiction recovery team. It's a great program. It's right now in Paramus, Mawa, and Lynnhurst. I emailed a couple of you quickly before the meeting. You can look at the prosecutor's website. I think it's a really good program. What we have to do now is somehow get the people who want, and it's not only heroin, it could be anybody. I have a part out of my resource guide, I'm actually going to give it to you, Ted. Sorry, I quickly pulled it, it's very small print, but it's really interesting, you know, we, what we really need to do is, how should I say this? It works, but there are people that are scared to go to police, and I can understand that. I would be scared to go to a police officer with drugs or paraphernalia or anything like that, but anybody in the county, or say, County can go to Paramus, Lynnhurst, or Mawa on their certain days and turn the drugs in, no charges. The cops, they want to help. They want to help the people. So I'm wondering how Hackensack, I know I emailed some information to Captain Aquila and the outreach person, I forgot the detective's name, but, you know, I think that's one good thing, but I'm going to try and take some time and look up some resources, because I think anybody that deals with kids or young adults really should know as much as they can about drugs, alcohol addiction. I mean, there's things that, when you read about it, you'll be like, "Oh, I didn't know that," you know? It might sound simple, but there's just things that, you know, because, you know, I think saying that there's not a problem, I mean, because this is a mental health issue. It is, addiction's a mental health problem, and, you know, I think sometimes when we don't know how to deal with it, we try, we ignore it maybe, or think it's not really a problem, but there's, I mean, what I've been seeing, it's, it looks like, you know, there's problems out there here in Hackensack and in this area, just all of Bergen, well, you know, it's all over Jersey right now, but, I mean, I think we really should look at some ways to, you know, help the young adults in a positive way, because there's a way to do it. And I'm going to do some more research, too, because I emailed a copy to Judy Foreman, she's in the addiction services portion of mental health in the county. So I know Captain Aquila was interested, and, but right now, you can take anybody during those times to any of those other towns, you know, they can get help, or they could just go to Bergen Regional. But I think more needs to be done outside the school, not just in the school. It's, you know, I've told a million times about homelessness, you know? You can go to the shelter during the day, or people help you during the day, but homelessness doesn't end when people go on vacation. It's there all the time, just like addiction and any mental illness or anything. It's, you know, because a psychiatrist is away on vacation, doesn't mean it's gone. It's still there.
Right.
So I'm trying to think positively. I'm very optimistic about this program, and I'm sure you guys could call Kenny, the police chief of Paramus, or Lynnhurst, or Mawa, and speak to any of them, or, you know, the agency Care Plus that runs it, and learn more about it.
They have a lot of connections there, too.
So, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to speak a little bit more to that. Just recently, Hackensack's having its first drug drop box put in, and be inside the police station, right inside the precinct door when you walk in.
Right. We'll also have a mobile box that we can bring to events, show, concerts.
Right.
Back to-
American Night Out?
National Night Out.
National Night Out.
All these programs.
And one of the reasons that's so important is, you know, many of these young adults today, young people are becoming addicted to opioids and, you know, painkillers, basically. A lot of them, maybe somebody had an injury or a surgery and they got hooked on it that way, or they found them in your parents' medicine cabinet. You know, the less drugs that aren't being used in someone's medicine cabinet, the better. So this is an opportunity for people to, you know, "What do I do with these?" Well, now you have a place to take them, and they'll be disposed of properly, and they'll be, take away the opportunity for them to get into the wrong person's hands, because we all know that opioid abuse is the leading leader to heroin addiction right now, especially it's an epidemic in North Jersey. It's to the point where it's, you know, it's taken quite a few lives and really becoming, more people are dying from heroin addiction a year than car accidents in the United States. So that's a sad fact. So I, Paul, where are you? You know, kudos to you, and we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, how are you?
Hi, hi, everybody. Gary Tozzato, 169 Fairmount Avenue, Hackensack. I just want to bring to the council and rest of the city government, something I've been observing for quite a few years and never really spoke about. I'm well aware when I speak of this topic of why it's being done, and it's basically with the utilities that we live with every day, public service, electric and gas, Suez Water, it used to be Hackensack Water, and how they go about identifying their services I've noticed in the past, and I've had to deal with it personally on some of my property, that how they mark their streets, our streets, and the type of product that they use to mark, the paint in particular.
Mm-hmm.
It happens to be a permanent paint that does not wash away, and I've also noticed that probably in most cases, the utility does not come back and remove the paint that's in our streets on our properties as well. I'll give you an example. About 15 years ago, I decided I would have the city, I would purchase the trees and have the cities plant between my sidewalk and the curb to beautify, put a little more green in an area that I felt really needed it. So through the proper procedure, the town did the right thing. They came, they looked, and as always, call before you dig, and the town did that, Hackensack did that, and they located, they called the utilities, they came, they located the gas line, they located the water line, and from there, they felt safe to where they were going to plant the two trees on the property. Well, they came, and as always, for instance, public service marked the gas meter, the gas curb box coming in. Not only did they mark the street as they always do, and the size of the main, and the size of the line coming into the house, but they actually carried the paint right across the sidewalk in one straight line, okay? Now, the front of that particular property is not deep, 20 feet from the curb to the front of the house. I was a little disturbed by that, because I knew that paint would not come off. So after the tree was planted, the city did a great job. I had to take a power brush, wire brush, and buff it off the sidewalk, because it just bothered me to have to see that on my property. And that seems to be the case all over town, especially in our streets, especially in our streets that have just been paved. Now, I understand the procedure. If somebody calls and says, "I think I have a water main leak," or "I smell gas," yes, they respond, the utilities have to respond, and if they do find the leak and they know they're going to schedule the work to be performed, they will go several addresses each way and identify, just in case maybe that all has to be replaced. But once again, that paint stays and it's not removed, so I'm asking if we as a community, as a city, could go and try and have some type of contact with the utilities, and maybe they have to change their procedure and their material. Maybe they can put down a type of substance that eventually wears away in a couple of months.
After a week or something, it goes away.
Yeah, I understand they don't want the street sweeper to knock it off before they get there, but it doesn't go away.
Right.
So that's my main concern, you know? It's our streetscape, we're trying to improve, we do these paving projects, curb projects, we're trying to beautify for everybody, and we're up against-
It's an eyesore, too.
It is, it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore.
I'm like you, it drives me crazy.
Right. And what's going to happen as Main Street goes, and now we're going to repave and recall us in the direction, they're going to come back and play with the paint, you know? It's an easy thing to do. They're doing their job, and we're not knocking that, but there has to be a different way to address it, and I think if the communities get together, they can push back a little bit, because they'll push back on us, the utilities, got a lot of clout, and that's all I really have to say.
I've seen them paint pavers, I've seen them go over Belgium Block with spray paint.
Yeah, a little excessive, but-
Why?
There should be a way to get, well, when you go out tonight, you look on our sidewalk down here, I had a few marks for the gas. I understand why, but are they going to take it away? Are they going to knock it out of there when we're finished, you know? So thanks a lot, just wanted to bring that to you.
Thanks, appreciate it, Gar.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing absolutely nobody, motion closed.
Arthur.
Go call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Von Rudenberg.
Good evening. I just want to thank everyone. My first month on council has been very exciting. I want to thank the cultural arts department, the recreation department, the city manager, and everyone involved in all the different events. I've gone to many of them, and it's a really good time, it's a good night out. It's nice to see, in a big city, you see all these friendly faces, you see everyone having a good time, you know, young and old, and it's just really nice to see you have that hometown feel in a big city, and, you know, I'm excited about all the different events, and I hope they continue to go on. It really brings everyone together, and, you know, I hope to see more people out. It was a really good crowd at the ones I attended, and it was a really good time. To Paul, I agree with you, whatever way I could work with you and the city manager, I'd be happy to do that with the different drug programs. As a mom of young kids, it scares me. It's a real epidemic in North Jersey, and I think a main thing is, you know, when you paint a picture of, you know, someone that's addicted to heroin, you paint a different picture in your head, and you don't realize it's so close to home. It could come, you know, from, just like everyone said, painkillers. It starts, you know, it's working class people, it's people with families, it's all different ages, and I think that's something that has to be instilled in teenagers, they learn that. So whatever way I could help you and work together, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. Also want to thank cultural arts, recreation, etc. We had a wonderful Fourth of July celebration, the fireworks were spectacular, we had a huge, huge crowd, I think biggest I've seen in a number of years. Entertainment was great. Tuesday nights, we've had a couple of the Tuesday night concerts, we have one tomorrow, I think Eagle Mania, is Eagle Mania tomorrow?
Eagle Mania.
Eagle Mania's tomorrow night, so those have been going well. Randy spoke about the Friday night mini concerts, seeing wonderful, wonderful Mr., young Mr. Whitaker on the keyboard was just phenomenal past Friday. I mean, what a talent, just, and what a lovely, lovely young man, too, so gracious. It was a pleasure to see him. And thanks to Toyota, they, you know, they're giving three $500 scholarships to our students, and they've given out the first two, and I'm assuming they're giving out the next one at the next mini concert. It was really nice of them to step up to the plate and also be part of the Give Back program, so, you know, a round of thanks to them as well. And lots of other things going on down Atlantic Street Park. I think it was Mr. Serbo alluded to Wednesday nights, we do have our Shakespeare in the Park. Mondays, we've been having yoga or zumba, we've had a couple of movies under the stars. So Steph, you're right, there's a lot going on in town, and I think we're seeing more and more folks start to come out and enjoy them as well, so that's, you know, a very, very positive thing. On the docket tonight, there were a number of things about the Anderson Street project. I think this is going to be a wonderful project. We're looking at 140 to 160 units, yes. They are going to be receiving a pilot, it's a 20-year pilot. Looking at a piece of property now that pays approximately $85,000 in taxes. Year one, they'll be paying between $350,000 and $400,000 a year as part of the first year pilot program. So again, that's a nice incentive for the city, a nice return to our residents. Mr. Serbo mentioned that we're not doing anything for the various socioeconomic groups, and I believe this is how we're doing something for the socioeconomic groups, because, you know, taxes affect all of us. So we're partners with these developers. I mean, the money I'm describing to you as part of the pilot is a portion of their revenue. So as they make more money, the city makes more money, and that money goes directly to the bottom line to offset taxes and expenditures of the city. So we're working very hard to see that this money is used in an equal and fair way. The Anderson Street project is also making a COA contribution that will go into the city's COA fund, so again, helping us to either build affordable housing or rehab some of the affordable housing that we already have. So I think that's a great, great project. Mr. Serbo also mentioned about the school, he mentioned about paying for Padre Pio. That's not this council's decision. I mean, the decision to rent Padre Pio is one that's made by the Board of Ed. We've said on many occasions that we support working together to get a school built, we agree that a school needs to be built in the city and has been for many years, not impacted at all by redevelopment or future upcoming redevelopment. This is, we've seen overcrowding in our schools for the past, what, seven years now?
Seven, eight years.
Going on. And we're very happy to say we're setting one up for, in August, we're going to have a Board of Education meeting, myself and Councilwoman Von Rudenberg and Ted and some of the members of the Board of Ed. We have a number of issues. School, of course, is high on the list, looking at shared services, looking at better ways for the city council and the Board of Ed to work together, so I'm very, very encouraged by that and look forward to a good outcome of that. You know, last I mentioned it briefly when Regina was here, FAA meeting is this Wednesday, 7:00 in Teterboro, if anyone cares to attend. I don't think that will be the subject of discussion, I think that will probably happen at the next meeting in October, but I am going to make every effort to be there and attend and represent the city. It's always worthwhile, again, to have your noise complaints, whether you come to the meeting, or whether you just take the time and energy to call them in. They do log them, they do track them. I hate to say, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but that is what happens. So, you know, when you're hearing noise, especially extreme noise, please pick up the phone, make the phone call, and log them in, it's coming from Hackensack. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out, and have a good night.
Thank you. David?
As was said earlier, tomorrow night, we will have live entertainment on the Green featuring Eagle Mania at 7:30. On Wednesday, as Mr. Serbo said, you can see Shakespeare in the Park, Romeo and Juliet at 7:30 in Atlantic Street Park. On Thursday, we have Movies Under the Stars. We'll feature the movie, the animated movie Cars, Parents Bring Your Kids Out, the movie starts at 8:00 PM. Next Tuesday, August 1st, is National Night Out on the Green at 7:30. We will have live performance by Soul Play. We will have live performance by Soul Play. Next Friday is the last day of summer camp, where the rec department has a carnival-type atmosphere, and each camp will perform a live set starting 11:00 AM at Fushini Park. The camp is also having its last two trips, they're going to Mountain Creek and Midewuton sometime this week. Theater camp on Wednesday at 10:30 in the morning at the Hackensack High School Auditorium, they're putting on their annual play. And if you can't make it during the day, you can come Thursday evening at 7:30. Hackensack Junior Football is taking registration fee, it's $160 per kid. Cheerleading signup is also going on, and that's $125. Soccer, registration is closed, but they will, they are going to open it this Wednesday through Saturday. You have to register online, and it's $100 per person. Thank you, hopefully we'll see you at one of these events I mentioned. Have a good evening.
Done?
Yeah.
Okay, I agree 100% with Gary. I was on vacation, I come back Saturday, and I catch one of the guy from PSENG marking the streets, and I made a question, why you guys are doing this? And he says, well, you know, we have to mark the lines in the way the people know where they have to dig, and this and that. I said, but we just fixed the street a few weeks ago. How you guys are digging again? Well, he says, sometime we run out of money, and then when we got the money, then we continue the program. And I said, I was in a meeting about what, two years ago, with the people from the utilities, and we tried to work together with them, and that way, they can do their repair, they can do the updates, and they were going to do the paving. So we did the paving because we were supposed to, like, believe that they finished already. And now they're digging again. For instance, Rose Avenue, we paved the street about what, five, six, seven weeks ago? They're already marking, and they're starting to make the hole, and what they are doing is, they are replacing the mirrors. It's not like they are looking for leaks and try to fix. I understand that, it's an emergency, but they are replacing mirrors. The same thing happened in Coles, Lewis, right? So I mentioned already to Ted, Ted already mentioned to Wayne, and I think that we're going to get a letter from the utility company, and we can say something.
This, this discussion and issue has come up almost in the first couple of weeks of my employment with the city. I have made the request to PSENG that we need to know, and they need to forecast the streets that they're going to address. Now, obviously, if they have a break or a condition, because it's a safety condition, they're going to dig the street up. But as Jim and I have already spoken to them, they're, I should say Wayne, they're supposed to restore those streets, and they have the ability to use this ultraheat thing where they can heat it up, it's almost like a pizza oven, and they hold it over the top of it, and they can make that street as smooth as it was before it was ever altered. And that's a condition they're supposed to be doing. So I am pretty passionate about this, because it, it really is a problem for the city that we're investing this time and money to make improvements, and then turn around in less than a year and dig it back up again. So this will be my fourth request from PSENG to supply this with us, because the improvements they make to either electric or gas, the city needs to know, so we can work in concert together. There was some pushback from the utility, said that they didn't really know at this time, and I said, look, there's no chance that you folks are, you know, we wake up one morning on Monday and go, you know, we should go replace that gas line or replace those poles, I'm just not that naive. So I will go back to them, but this is a serious issue, and the councilman is absolutely right. We have pushed hard in the last two years, I wasn't here, but previously, to make all these street improvements. And the city is really performing an earnest effort to replace curbs, fix these streets, and make this city proud of the, the conditions that we have. It's going to take everybody's cooperation, so I'll go back to them again, but if they don't fix them back up, they're going to hear from us, because this, this has to be addressed. Thank you.
Yeah, the city got so many problems, this is a city, you can imagine when you take care of your own house, now you can imagine the city. Like, for instance, I got a phone call, and I was on vacation, about the trees in Euclid Avenue. And Ted took action, and they had to remove two out of the five, right? The other one, they just trimmed it, and you're going to go down two because it's a sick tree. So we are working on it, but you got to give us a chance. With the problem in Carver Park, okay, we know that sometime, you're going to have somebody that using drugs, and no way that we can control everything. So now, with the garbage, sometime, you got so many people, they can, they overflow. Before, David used to go and replace the plastic bag and put a new one in, but what happened? He got accused of stealing the, the plastic bags, or taking the yapp away from the people from the PDOL. So he doesn't do it anymore. And if you go to one of the guy and say something to help you with any problem, then you got a lawsuit in your hands. We are rousing them. So how do you deal with them? So the community has to understand that we try to work together with every department, but at some time, backfire. So now, if we don't do anything, and we keep our mouth shut, then this is what happens in the parks. You know? So right now, we got a lawsuit in our hands, yeah, because we say hello to somebody. That don't make any sense. Thank you for coming.
I just want to say one last thing. Hackensack Junior Basketball is going to give away 60 to 100 backpacks to the kids in the, in our program. Ted, we were wondering if we could put a box downstairs in a different city building for back-of-school supplies that we would give to kids throughout the city.
Okay, I'll start it up.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Going back to July 4th, that was a great, great crowd we had, it was unbelievable, it must have been 8, 9,000 people, it was packed. Some of the people here tonight that were there, and it was a great show, Time Machine did a great job. This past Tuesday, Beatle Mania was, was unbelievable. They actually changed costumes, they, some of the guys even looked like some of the Beatles, much less sounding like them. It was really a good show, I enjoyed it tremendously. Friday night, as mentioned before, we had our own Matthew Whitaker, who has been on The Ellen Show and won the Apollo Theater, performed for us in our own park, our own new park on Atlantic Street. We had a very good crowd for that, it was a beautiful evening. We got to honor him with a proclamation. How old, I think he's 17 years old, 16, 17?
16, I see.
16 years old. He's been playing since he started playing, he's three years old on the piano. Young gentleman is blind, and he's a phenom, he's just unbelievable how, how good he is.
He's my neighbor.
Is he your neighbor?
Yeah.
You heard about the million-dollar grant that we received, which will be used for streetscaping as part of the rehabilitation project of Main Street? This will be put to good use for some green areas, lighting, other things to make Main Street that much better. The two-way conversion is underway with the beginning of State Street, and it's going on, on time, it's going very well. A lot of the ADA curbing is going in. Tomorrow night, as mentioned before, is Eagle Mania. If you like cover bands, this is the best Eagles cover band you probably ever see. They're very well-respected, very well-received, I've seen them two or three times, they're very good. That's on the Green. Friday night is, Randy, you back there?
Yeah.
Caribbean?
Caribbean.
Caribbean night, Atlantic Street Park, all right? There'll be some dancing that night, it's going to be, make sure you get down there. Bring a blanket, bring a chair, all right? Tonight's agenda, you saw a bond for about $1.8 million for capital improvements, which includes a lot of different things, a new fire truck is in that, or new?
Fire.
Yep. New fire rescue truck.
Elevator.
Elevator.
Replacement of windows.
Roofs.
Fire truck, roofs.
Yeah, so money going back into the city, keep everything going. And again, that drug drop-off box is very, very important. We're glad we finally got one, and we hope it's well utilized. Deputy Mayor mentioned their meeting with the Board of Ed, which long awaited, long overdue, mid-August, mid-August. And one of the first things that we talked about is the school, of course. We're totally on board with building a school. And as she mentioned, we don't, we don't rent a Padre Pio school, that's not on us, so, you know, but hopefully, we'll get to the point where we don't need to rent a Padre Pio school. Paul Nichols, thank you for your comments. Gary, great comments, because it, it burns me too when I see these guys just go out there with the cannon, you know, over the curb, new curbs, new sidewalks, doesn't matter. And, you know, it, I wonder sometimes how necessary it is to use as much as they do, but I'll let them answer that. City manager will be reaching out to Dave Hollenbeck on that, from Public Service, and whoever our contact from the Water Department, or from Suez is. What else do we have? I think that's about it, but thanks to everybody for coming. It was a good evening, wasn't too, too late. And sorry, we were a little late getting out here, but we had some business to attend to. So everybody get home safely, and enjoy your week and your weekend. Hope to see you at the concert tomorrow night. Thanks. Motion closed.
Offer.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Padaglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay.